Trivia would be a lot more fun.
That's the correct time, so we will go with...
All right.
Catherine is ill, so we will not have report of city officers tonight. 311 is a substitute, already accepted out of ZNA, and that's favorable. 611 out of Parks, and that is favorable. 711 has continued to the 28th.
Has a sub been already accepted?
No.
We just wait until...
Okay. Also, 8610 has continued to the 28th. We go to resolutions. 1118 is confirming. 1116 needs to be accepted as a substitute of CED, and that is favorable.
1116?
Yes, ma'am. To first reading, Bill 811, Personnel and Finance for the 28th of March. 911, 28th out of Parks. 1011 goes to Area Plan. And under unfinished business, 1119, 1120, 1121, 1122 go to zoning and annexation for 328. Is that it?
Excuse me.
That should be it. If not, would you like to? If no one's...
In our neighborhood thing, the northeast has been around for about three years. Finally gonna do it.
So John's gonna go now? To the trivia?
Oh, I was gonna go.
Why am I going?
But you don't want to go.
Ouch, kicked me.
I did not.
The last time we almost got... I was telling Kathy, we almost got kicked out of the... Kicked out of Holy Cross. Trivia night.
Oh, really?
Because someone at our table was allegedly using a handheld device to get answers. It was nice. And we still came in like seven.
Obviously choosing the wrong sources.
Yeah. Some of those people take that stuff serious and load up on...
This is administration.
What trivia night is this?
It's student baker on Saturday.
Oh, no.
So we can take Donnigs and that one.
They're good.
You're going, right? You're not going? Well, I'm not gonna go then.
You're not going?
Rod's not gonna be there, why would I go?
Oh.
Anybody hurt anymore?
Is Daddy Daughter Dance tonight?
He said school.
Thing comes up about six times a year now. We have a list of the categories that we can brush up.
Maps.
They have to be in color. They've gotta be... Yeah, they gotta be colored maps. Right now.
It's gonna help.
Yes, it's gonna be in color.
I hear IBM's bringing a team with bots.
Yeah. Yeah, that computer was ripping people on Jeopardy.
Oh, I saw that.
Still the final.
It's good, though.
You'd have to answer, you have so much money.
I can't figure out why he wouldn't have to know the computer. Why the computer wouldn't have to know all of them first? Because anything the computer knows, he knows instantly.
And we have to do it.
No, he changed it.
So I thought it was a put on.
Yes, we'll figure out what the question is. I mean, it really is. It's not a direct...
But we do it.
It's not how many people are there in Albania, which you wouldn't...
Yeah.
We need to be on that.
They have to make the alliteration or the analogies and...
I don't know how long.
Sherlock Holmes' hat means this, and so it refers to the house of the Baskerville.
That's why I'm gonna go to the large, see how it's taking.
Some author that...
Are you gonna be different from us?
Yeah, because you gotta be different.
Five questions and some...
I didn't...
What happened?
From here, it's the president points a tip.
Sarge at 7?
You have to, there's certain...
We got half the stuff in there, more than that, probably.
Last year, maybe the last 10 years, I think we had four or five, four, I don't know. I gotta go back into my notes.
Have we got your own here in the city?
Half the state does.
The state does it for us?
No, we have to do it with the city. We're talking about the redistro, the city has to send all.
Yeah, I'd like to go to that.
Oh, I remember. Oh, remember? I remember him. He did. Okay. Yeah, he was around every meeting. He knew all that stuff.
Yes, he did.
He was very thoughtful.
We used to do it whether we asked him or not.
That's true.
That's true.
He wasn't happy when I didn't accept it.
That's it. I would never say that.
He was even less happy when I didn't pay the bill to the city that I hadn't asked him to do work for.
I would never do that.
Who is that?
God, very much.
Where's he at now?
He's around.
Oh, yeah?
I see him.
Oh, yeah, I'm just last week.
Is that right?
Still living down on 34th or 35th.
Oh, he's terrible.
25th and...
What happened?
The murder.
Doesn't it courtyard?
No, courtyard's not part of my district.
Yeah, that's your district.
No, it's yours. There's a little notch that comes out.
No, it isn't. You're putting down.
I reported as a west side. The first I did.
Go look at your map, man.
I think I'm right.
That's... I know I'm right. There's all sorts of stuff.
You picked it all last night.
There's all sorts of stuff that happens there, so I know exactly whose district it is.
Miami picks up some of your district, too. Miami, it's really always...
Yeah, that's just... That's a real odd one. Where that kinda nips out.
I think it's gonna be outer this year because of the population shift. It's gonna be fun. It's gonna be a little bit more challenging.
I don't see any 25th on here.
Because 25th's a side street.
See, most of the sisters have to have equal...
It's off of Jefferson, run across Lubin Center.
So what could be at 6th could be in the 2nd. And with the 1st, they could do... Depending how it's gonna be drawn up.
Well, it just says group.
Okay. Yeah. Because what happened was, we did, there was a piece that was in the 1st.
Huh?
At Park City.
So you had a brother in your district.
Terrible thing that happened in your district last night.
Two years ago, it was a piece of... Bendix.
Yeah, St. Anthony's is in there, too.
Pull that out.
No, St. Anthony's is not.
Right next door to that building.
Yeah, it comes from Iron Highway and it goes over to... I don't know whatever this is.
I'm surprised you said that, man.
Tom, did you get the... Maybe it's brand new across there as well.
Oh, yes, I did. Yeah.
They were out there right away, weren't they?
Yeah. And then the AEP went out.
Look at it.
It went in there.
You have to pull forward.
And then the AEP was going to get in touch with the railroad because they figured it was coming.
Can't pull, you gotta pull in.
So...
Yeah, that's true.
That was quick. It was quick, too. I checked the email, is there like an aisle or something there?
Threatening them with the face.
Yeah, yeah. Should've... I couldn't remember that.
I'll liberize all them traps.
Those houses you're talking about. I'd love to have those listed, I mean, they're going up.
Is it you?
No.
Oh.
I mean, I think that there's a real market for those places over there on... Eddie, whatever it is. The Triangle. Eddie Knowles. Is he related to Eddie Heskey?
I think I went to school with him.
He looks so nice today.
It's cold, though. There was a wind. I want it to be a little better.
What, today?
Sunshine and sixty would be okay.
End of the week.
It'll be fifty-something tomorrow.
It's gonna rain, isn't it? I don't accept it when it rains.
I'm going to a glass glass.
I'll take him.
Our Fine Arts Department's taking the college students down there for a concert. I agree to check them out.
The director?
Dean Curtis. Am I yourself there?
Yeah. He's a black man, right?
Yes, yes.
He's in Rhode.
Oh, yeah.
He does a lot.
Oh, he's a...
Really nice man.
He's really taking our fine arts.
Yeah. And he does... He does a lot for IU. I mean, he's all over this world, PR guy. He's excellent.
But I never used to... Well, he's flying. He's not gonna be on the bus. He's gonna fly.
Where you start?
The three of us are gonna be on the bus.
Coming, ready, move, get some.
Dean Curtis.
Oh, yeah.
He's out of Chicago.
But I can't...
Schmull's a funny guy, too. None? Schmull. I like it. He's a good kid, too. This campaign guy?
I can't be gone the whole bunch.
He should've done a... He should've done a council thing, though.
Can't do it.
Should've done a...
So I probably like it. So I just don't like to go.
He lives in Lower...
We'll see, but...
I like how you did that little sheet today. I thought about that. I put one of those for...
So when you guys...
I'm all set, except picking a Friday, and I don't...
Do you have another companion?
Yeah, I don't wish I had to make that for you.
We're good to go. We'll be out of here shortly.
Then I can use that for a transfer.
Yeah.
Thank you. Took care of a little special resolution tonight.
Oh, no, I think this is gonna be a very quiet meeting. Even though I didn't believe Anne, when she said it was a lot of people. I thought she was kidding.
Buddy's here.
Hell, Buddy.
I really didn't believe her.
That was fun. I know you didn't.
We'll give him with the invocation.
No, this is gonna be... We're gonna be going home very...
Buddy got here?
Buddy's here. I said, yay.
I don't look like Buddy.
Well, that's not Buddy.
Yep.
Could be.
Didn't we deal with crap last night?
Did you get a bat hit? Did you get one of those $300 bats?
Oh, yeah. Gotta have one of those.
I sided against that.
No?
You're talking about Pickham Hot?
Did you get a good one? How old is he?
Oh, he's eight. He's got one from last year.
Gotta get a new one every year. We know that, Dad.
You shouldn't use up all the hits.
Come on, Dad. You gotta get a new one.
I'll get into that when he gets older. I've got one, must have plenty.
Yeah, Buddy's here.
Still left?
Buddy's here.
Hey, that's a 1958 game at Oliver Park.
Yeah.
John hit one on the railroad tracks.
No, there's one. It's a smooth hour, right? Actually, I was playing center field and it bounced off my head.
Hey, Buddy.
Over there by...
Hey, Buddy.
That hurt in your leg.
No, no, I'm trying to get the skink of Purdue off of me. I just came from West Lafayette.
And that's been your excuse for all these years.
Anyway, sit here, or those are mine.
You have the invocation, by the way.
You're kidding me?
No, I don't.
Okay. Seriously. Seriously.
You can handle that? Give me... This is a 7:15, 7:20 meeting, so...
Okay.
Praise the Lord, praise the council, bless everybody all the way back.
Okay, I didn't wanna... Because I think I'm gonna miss the first meeting in April. I'm at a component in this class.
You sure you got time for this, Buddy?
Huh?
You sure you got time for this?
This is just... That's a good class.
Yeah, yeah.
What is it? All hazards mitigation by FEMA from the Department of Homeland Security.
Oh, yeah, that sounds like a five-day... Yeah, Buddy. You'd rather be with us, not offended. All hazards mitigation. What do they say about declared reactors?
Well, you know what? We had to write objectives, and if we were in Japan, you would go, three objectives. Run quick, drive quick, and kiss your ass goodbye.
Is he going?
Oh, no.
Put it right there with the rest. We'll come back and get them.
Huh?
The price was.
Ah.
What is it? What's he doing? Everyone's commenting about my greens today.
Because it's not St. Patrick's Day yet.
Yeah.
You're just green within.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
There might be a blinkboard.
Probably is.
The March 14th, 2011 South Bend Common Council is now in session. I'll rise for the invocation by our own councilman, Al Buddy Curses.
Thank you. Please bow your head. Dear Father in Heaven, we ask that you look down favorably on this city and on this council to give it the strength to make the decision to help the citizens of this city. We also ask that you look down on the citizens of Japan to help them in this time of need. With that, we say amen.
Amen.
Pledge the witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and justice for all.
So Wardy, read the roll.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Mr. LaFoul?
Here.
Mrs. Bezella?
Uh, present.
Dr. Varner?
Present.
Vice President Oliver.
Present.
Mr. Curses?
Present.
Councilmember Rouse?
Present.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Dieter?
Present.
Mr. Wardy?
Nine.
Thank you. We have a report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the February 28th, 2011 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved to sign Derek Dieter David Varner.
Move the minutes be approved as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those in opposition? Thank you. Any special business before the council this time? Seeing none, the report of city offices. Catherine Top, the Director of Code Enforcement, was to be here tonight, give us an update on abandoned houses. She is ill, and that has been rescheduled till March 28th. Okay, have a motion or resolve in committee of the whole?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Committee of the whole is in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council sits at the committee. Proposed ordinances are read by title by the city clerk, John Wardy, reports then, liberally given by the chairperson of the council, standing committee to which the proposed ordinance has been sent for an advisory review and recommendation. Mr. Wardy, would you please read Bill... Substitute Bill 0311.
Public hearing on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 5032 Miami Street, South Bend, Indiana, Councilmanic District 5 in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you, Mr. Wardy. Is there a presenter present?
Oh, committee report.
Committee report, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The zoning and annexation committee met this afternoon, and we bring this bill to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. The presenter, please state her name and address.
Krista Nader with the Area Plan Commission, offices on the 11th floor. Janice, could you turn the projectors on? And do you want me to pull down this screen so you guys can see without having to turn around? No? Okay.
Isn't that automatic? Didn't we pay for an automatic screen? John?
No.
Whoa. It is them.
There we go. Okay. The petitioner is requesting a zone change from the SF1 Single Family and Two Family District to the OB Office Buffer District for property located at the northeast corner of Miami and Jackson Roads to allow an insurance agency, but any office would be allowed at this location. I have two photos of the site. This is from the Miami exposure, and this is along Jackson. There's actually a house, and then this is the roof of the shed, garage, wherever the other building on the property is. The site is 1.15 acres. A new 5,950 square foot building is proposed. The maximum size of a building in the Office Buffer District is 5,000 square feet. Therefore, a variance was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals for the larger building at their March 2nd meeting. There are 22 parking spaces, and the plan shows an access from Miami and an access from Jackson. The subdivision that was done back in 1986 only allowed for access on Miami, so there is currently a subdivision in the Area Plan Office that will be going before the Platte Committee this Thursday to allow for the second access onto Jackson. The site is currently served by a well-inseptic system, but the site plan indicates that the new building will connect to the city utilities, and the city engineer has confirmed that the city utilities are available. To the north is a single-family home, zoned SF1, and the Farrington Apartments, zoned MF2, which is high-density multifamily. To the east is a vacant, single-family zoned parcel and the remainder of the Farrington Apartments. To the south, across Jackson, is the South Side Baptist Church, zoned SF1, Single Family and Two Family District. To the southeast, so Kitty Corner, is the Hermitage Estate subdivision, zoned PUD Planned Unit Development. To the west, across Miami, is Jackson Middle School, and on the very corner is a Nipco Substation, all zoned SF1, Single Family and Two Family District. At the public hearing, two people spoke in opposition of this petition. Comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission. The intent of the Office Buffer District is to serve as a transitional district, and the development standards in the OB District are established to assure small-scale developments. In this case, the Area Board of Zoning Appeals variance allowed for a slightly larger building, but still limiting the land uses that could be incompatible for this area. Any questions?
Mr. Davis?
The part that the... It's gonna be decided on later on regarding...
On Thursday?
Pardon me?
The driveway?
Yeah. Does that have to come back before us again?
No, that's a subdivision issue.
Okay, so we don't...
No, you won't see it again. I was just kind of explaining that it may or may not have an access on Jackson, depending on what happens on Thursday.
Okay, but that's up to them.
Right.
Any other questions of the presenter? Seeing none, hearing none. Anyone present wishing to speak in favor of Bill Substitute Bill 0311?
We need the petition. That was the area.
I'm sorry. Let the petitioner come forward, please. I'm sorry.
Certainly. Abigail Rini, 2310 Wolf Point Drive, Rochester, Indiana. I am the contingent purchaser of this parcel as a developer for Indiana Farm Bureau Insurance, and this is our intent to develop this site for a single-tenant office building for their new location in South Bend. We've spent several months, you know, scouring the neighboring areas and feel that this is a nice spot for their all intents and uses. Farm Bureau has, you know, a very strong presence in most Indiana counties, but also a good relationship with friends and neighbors, essentially. So we're excited about being in more of a buffer district here. That was the request per area planning, and we were happy to accommodate that. Pretty much, it's just a nice, classic, timeless-style structure, not a high-traffic area, and we intend to landscape it and develop it per all of South Bend's covenants and requirements. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of the petitioner? Seeing none, hearing none, council? Anyone present wishing to speak in favor of Substitute Bill 0311? Anyone present wishing to speak against it? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move for favorable recommendations?
Second.
You heard the motion in the second, all in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, go to full council with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Wardy, would you please read Bill 0611?
Public hearing on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating $1,500,000 from State Grant Fund Number 210 as the operating endowment for the Ray and Joan Crock Center.
Your committee report.
Yes. The Parks Committee met this afternoon concerning this bill and sends it to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Bezella. The presenter present?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Stephen Licky, Mayor of the City of South Bend, offices on the 14th floor of this building. I come before you tonight asking for an appropriation of $1.5 million. These are dollars received from the state of Indiana to be used as part of our local fundraising effort to match grant funds to the Salvation Army to build our local Ray and Joan Crock Center. As you know, construction is well underway. We had actually appropriated... The state is providing $2 million of the $10 million local match. We had actually appropriated that money last year, but did not encumber it coming forward into this year. The state had requested that they be able to make four payments of $500,000 each. One payment was made last year and distributed to the Salvation Army. One has been received, but is not distributed yet, and we expect to receive two more this year. So that is the purpose for asking for the authority to distribute those dollars to the Salvation Army. Major Bob Webster is here from the Army. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to entertain any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Licky. Anyone have a question of either the mayor or the major from the council?
Sure.
Mr. Davis? Question?
Yeah, sure, I have one. Is this on? Is this one out? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry? Sorry?
Yes.
They're using the other mics, Mr. Davis.
Where? Right there. Can you hear me out? Okay, wow. That's good. Earlier, we talked about this project and, you know, we discussed a number of things, but I neglected to ask a question that I wrote down, I written down. And as it relates to the percentages that are being applied for our local workforce on this particular project. And I wanted to ask the major, not you necessarily, Mayor Steve, but the question I wanted to ask about this pro, the project and even the program that was installed. Do you think that this particular project will be a catalyst to start looking at and making sure that local contractors and local people start getting jobs on local work sites like this? I mean, because this is sort of a thing that we kind of looked at as being sort of unique when you first came with it. And so I guess my question, first question would be, was it very difficult to put it together? And have you, have the things that you thought or envisioned or dreamed are coming to fruition with your initial dream?
Councilman, I appreciate the question. It has been very difficult. We have had challenges from the very beginning to put together a project. We chose to go with a project labor agreement because we believe that that would be the best way to assist us in accomplishing our goals. We set very high and lofty goals of 18% for minority and women-owned businesses to participate in the project. We also sent high goals of 18% minority and women workforce on the job site of the project. At this present time, we have been, it's been possible for us to exceed those goals. We are operating at a, at a nice, comfortable margin above those. I hope, and, and our desire is that our impact in the community will be that it will bring a sense of change and a sense of hope and a sense of accomplishment, that people can feel proud and honored to live in that area and to, to work in that area and to be involved in recreation and other activities in that area. And I hope that everything that we're doing as part of this project will serve to be an example in our community.
So do you think it can be duplicated?
I, I know that it, for us, the, the challenge has been there and we've been able to back the project in, in a way that has made it so that it's, we're putting our best foot forward. I would not be able to answer that question unless I actually was the person in charge of the different projects, you know, knowing, coming from an owner standpoint, I know that we are, we are supporting that and encouraging that to be done. But I guess it would really depend on the individual owner as to how much they wanted to work to make this happen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, hearing none. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of 0611? Anyone present wishing to speak against it? Seeing none, counsel, is there a motion?
Move for favorable recommendation.
Second.
Motion is made and probably second to send 0611 for counsel with a favorable recommendation. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Mr. Roy, would you please read?
We have a motion to continue 7/11 to March 28.
Second.
You heard the motion, all in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Let me get a motion on 8610.
You have a motion to also continue that to March 28.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries.
Motion rising for full counsel.
Second.
Full council is now in session. Mr. Roy, third reading on 3/11, please.
Third reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 5032 Miami Street, South Bend, Indiana, Councilmanic District 5 in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Move the 3/11 be amended as it was in the committee of the whole.
Second.
Is that right?
No, I don't think there are any amendments to it.
Mr. Roy, we have a second, read the roll.
03. That is correct.
What do we amend it?
You amended it not at this meeting, but a prior meeting.
Okay.
The roll. Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzella.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
We need to have a regular point of order.
Did you do a voice vote on it?
Right, all in favor?
Okay, we're substituting as, amending as it was in the, okay, voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? Continue, Mr. Roy.
Not to pass as amended.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
We need a motion.
We moved that the bill be passed as amended.
Second.
Okay, we're good now.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye again.
Mrs. Pizzella.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Kersen.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President Dieter. Nine aye. Third reading on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana appropriating $1,500,000 from State Grant Fund Number 210 as the operating endowment for the Ray and Joan Crock Center.
Move for patches of Bill 0611.
Second.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzella.
Aye.
Dr. Varner. Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Kersen.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter. Nine aye.
Resolutions 1118.
A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the City of South Bend, Indiana, known as 5102 Dillon Drive, to be an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Global
That's a confirming resolution.
Just need your name and address and a short synopsis, please.
My name is Susan Joyce. My address, my business address is 760 McGardle Drive, Crystal Lake, Illinois, 60014. I am the Chief Financial Officer for Global Parts Network and its parent company, Viper Heavy Duty. Global Parts Network is proposing to establish a manufacturing facility here in South Bend that will manufacture and distribute commercial vehicle, truck parts, vehicle parts. The anticipated equipment investment is just over $2 million, approximately $2,750,000. The total cost of the project will be about $4 million, including inventory and other costs. We project that we'll have 22 new full-time positions within its first year of operations, which will bring a total payroll of $565,000 to the city. We currently have no employees here in South Bend. This is a new project for us. We anticipate we'll bring 30 permanent full-time positions to South Bend by the year 2014.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor of 1118? Opposition? Counsel?
Move for the adoption of 1118.
Second.
Mr. Roy.
Mrs. Pizzella.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Kersen.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye.
1116, please.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana establishing policies and forms of resolutions to be used in connection with the consideration of the granting of a property tax exemption pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-10-44 for the qualified enterprise information technology equipment.
Mr. Chairman, the Community Economic Development Committee met this afternoon in consideration of 1116, sent it to full counsel favorably.
Thank you very much.
I moved that 1116 be accepted as a substitute bill.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those in opposition, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Don Inks. I work with the Department of Community and Economic Development for the City of South Bend. Substitute Bill 1116 before you this evening would provide for a property tax exemption for enterprise information technology equipment. That equipment must qualify under state law, so it must be part of a project that is at least $10 million, and the wages paid have to be at least 125% of the county average. This will allow the, the community to market itself, to bring data center-type operations Currently, we have a great power infrastructure, a great communication infrastructure, but the one disadvantage we have in competing with other sites is that Indiana has a personal property tax. Other sites do not. So this bill would level the playing field and we would seek your support this evening.
All right, thank you. Mr. Inks, anyone like to speak in favor of 1116? Or opposition? Seeing none, counsel?
Move for the adoption of the substitute, 1116.
Second.
Mr. Roy. Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Kersen.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzella.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Thank you, first reading of 8/11, please.
First reading on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana appropriating $219,942 from the General Fund Number 101 in 2011 for the Office of Energy.
Move that Bill 811 be set for second reading, public hearing and third reading on March 28th and be sent to the Personnel and Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those in opposition, thank you, 9/11, please.
First reading on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend to transfer a portion of Frederickson Park from the Board of Park Commissioners to the State of Indiana.
I have a motion here.
Move that Bill 911 be set for second reading, third reading and, and public hearing on 3/28 and sent to the Parks Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those in opposition, thank you very much. 10/11, please.
I move that 10/11 be sent to Area Plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those in opposition. Now may I have the motion for 11/19, 11/20, 11/21 and 11/22?
Move that all the bills that you stated be sent to the Zoning Analysis Committee on March 28th.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those in opposition. Any new business before the council?
Sure.
So I guess I'm going to get used to that. I would like to publicly thank all city departments. I would love to do it individually, but my voice would go out if I tried it. But on the March 8th, we had an opportunity to have, and a couple of guest visitors from Washington High School who came out and was able to go to many different departments and view what a city councilman do, does on a, on a regular basis in dealing with different departments. They had opportunity to go into the mayor's office, the legal department, public works. You guys did a great job. Heard about the presentation that Carla Trapp put out. I think that their minds was open. I think that was a, a great opportunity for our youth, our students, our future senators, mayors, lawyers, to view the functions of local government. And I would like to thank all city departments that played a part in that because I think everyone did a great job. And the kids, excuse me, the students, because they're 17, 18 years old, left with a, a, a different take on where they live at, you know, and so, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for helping the students out. They came in, they came in from Washington High School. And I fight about that because I'm a cell grad, but they're still our kids and they're from the west side, let me do that one, they're from the west side. So again, thank you. I want to make mention, I was at a meeting yesterday and the enforcement of traffic on Miami Street where it's been widening at, has been called into question. A resident that lives on the street said that many of the cars are speeding past, well past 10 miles per hour, the speed limit. So that can be checked into, to the police station or get some enforcement out there. But the gentleman that lives out in that area, I spoke with Dr. Varner about it as well, because I know this is his district, you know, that makes sure that it is being looked into and people can slow down in that high-traffic area. And lastly, I want to find out, and I guess this is a question for District 6, Oliver Davis, what's going on with the graffiti war? And the reason why I'm asking this question is because I continue to see more and more graffiti pop up. And it's getting very, very frustrating because it's not only on personal property, it's becoming more and more on city home property. The BiDak under, on Michigan Street, Main Street, in Moro Park area, the one on Western, and the Walnut is tagged really heavy. And it's just different things like, you know, transport boxes that are on the street. I mean, everywhere you go, you see somebody's signature. And I don't think that that looks good. So my question right now is, what are we going to do about the reward of graffiti? My second question is, whose job is it to clean it up when it's on city property? Because many of these things have been out there for two months, three months maybe, and I'm sick of looking at it. It doesn't look good. I hate to show that, ask something to the people, just say, hey, South Bend is welcoming the graffiti. So I'm frustrated, not angry, I just want it cleaned up. Yes, sir.
May I address the counsel?
Do you have a question to him first?
Yeah.
I defer to the mayor.
Thank you. Oliver has been working with us. We, as well, are frustrated. The police department is actually going to take on an expanded role. Again, Oliver has been playing a very active role in that and will be bringing in some, hiring some youth as weather gets warmer. The winter time has been a little frustrating. Many of the properties that you mentioned are not city properties, so, but with either code enforcement or police authority, we are able to, to go on those and will be having an extensive graffiti elimination project moving forward as the weather warms up. I'll give you more information. I have, I have to talk to the, the chief to get a little bit more information about when they're really able to start with that.
Well, who owns the properties that I just talked about?
Well, the, the overpasses, the trestles are owned by the railroads. You know, other properties, you mentioned, obviously, there's some private property. So the, generally, the overpasses are railroad.
So has there any, any contact made with the railroads? Any information sent to the railroads saying, look, you guys, your, your, your trestles, is what you just said, are being tagged and if you don't pay them or take care of them, we're going to fine you? Have we made any attempts?
We, we have ongoing communication with the railroads. It's often unsatisfactory in terms of response.
So we're going to end up having to clean it up anyway, right?
Most likely, we will end up doing the, the graffiti removal in those areas, right?
So in saying all that, and it's not an attack on you or anyone in here, but in saying that and knowing all that, why hasn't it been cleaned up?
While the weather-
Because it, because it's been, before winter, and now that we're coming out in winter, it's still there. And so I can't continue to use winter as an excuse because we still cite people, we still pull cars, we still pick up trash, we still use the recreational facilities, we still cut people's water off, turn it back on. Everything else works, but we can't remove graffiti. And believe me, it's frustrating to hear someone's grandmother or someone at the grocery store ragging ragging me about some graffiti and she's well within her rights to talk to me about that because that's a part of city function. But when it's not being cleaned up, then I'm going to get frustrated because we keep hearing that we're going to take care of this later on. We have some kids that we want to take care of it. We have a city workforce of over 1,100 people and we can't keep our city clean. That's a problem. And yes, I'm frustrated, hugely frustrated. It doesn't look good. It looks bad. And I'm an artist, I like art. Mr. Al Davis, you declared the war of graffiti several months ago. We need results.
Can I say something? It's got to be at least 55 degrees to paint. Fire Station 2 was tagged last week. Within 23 hours, the paint was gone. By the next day, there was actually a police patrol car in the lot. Somehow, the perpetrator slid under the cameras during the two, three, four times that the officer made calls from our parking lot. Could not see who the perpetrator was, very frustrating. Maintenance came out and did paint the door. It was under 55 degrees and it looks like crap. At least the graffiti is off and it will be repainted as the weather warms up. Most of this paint is oil-based paint and to attempt to use it to, to take it off can actually, you know, it's an exercise in futility. So I hate seeing it and I've learned a lot about graffiti in the last few weeks here, learning which, what the symbols mean and, and everything. But I'm frustrated with it too, but I think we got to let it get a little warm to go on this war to paint it up.
Okay, but we're painting it up, so what's the solution? I mean, I'm, I'm not hearing the solution.
Yeah, if we could catch the perpetrator, perpetrators, that would be the great thing. Perhaps more video cameras out there.
Well, I would suggest that we start working at, this is my suggestion, since I'm not at the table. Maybe there's an opportunity that we can start using code enforcement on two different shifts. Maybe to provide some support to those areas that are getting tagged, faster tag, a faster citation, faster reaction to the problem. Maybe there is not a task force made of kids, maybe there are people who work for the city that take care of that. Maybe it's power washing, maybe there is actual painting, but maybe we start using our manpower that we already paying instead of asking kids to take care of it to start remedying this problem. I don't have all the answers, but what I do know is that we started along this well over a year ago and it's gotten worse. It hasn't gotten better. And I just keep on saying that because I'm going to drive home and I want to see K E B S. I want to see some other names and I'm going to see some people that just think that they're an artist. And it just doesn't look good.
Okay, you done?
I'm, I'm done, I'm off my soapbox. But we need results.